We now request C A Shripad sir to greet Mahadevan sir with a bouquet. A huge round of applause ladies and gentlemen. Now it's time to introduce our esteemed chairman, Professor Mahadevan sir. B. Mahadevan is a professor of Operations Management at the Indian Institute of Management Bengaluru, where he has been teaching since 1992. He has more than thirty years of wide-ranging experience in teaching, research, consulting, and academic administration at IIM Bengaluru and other reputed institutions. Mahadevan sir is a member of the editorial board of the Production and Operations Management Journal and the International Journal of Business Excellence. He has been playing a very significant role in the field of Sanskrit and the Sanskriti for the past twenty years. We welcome you sir. Let's have a huge round of applause. I kindly invite Professor Dr. V. Mahadevan to grace the stage and share insights on the crucial topic of leadership.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity and it's my pleasure to share some thoughts with you. I was requested to talk about the Indian knowledge system and then the leadership, management, economics. Indian knowledge system has become the flavor of the season now. Because the current establishment wants to bring Indian knowledge system. And it is such a strange experience for me that we have to bring Indian knowledge system to Indians. So, I don't know whether it is a tragedy or a comedy, I don't know. But the fact is government of India is today trying very hard to bring Indian knowledge system to Indians. And I had a very rare privilege of writing the first book in independent India on Indian knowledge systems. Again, it's very surprising. You have to wait for seventy-five years to get a good book to be written on Indian knowledge system and it was a very amazing experience for me. I mean, I can't talk four hundred and fifty pages in forty-five minutes. So, what I am going to do is just take you through a little bit of glimpse of Indian knowledge system so that you know you can do whatever you want to do. I come from an institution in which we don't believe in taking the horse to the pond. IIM Bangalore believes in creating thirst. You will find the pond, you will drink what you want to drink. So, I will do the same thing here. It's not easy for me to talk about Indian knowledge system but I want really energize you with what possibly could be Indian knowledge system. So, that's what we are going to do. Can we move? Can somebody coordinate with me? Okay. What I am going to do is I am going to first take what you may call it as a mantra from Rigveda, okay? You may be wondering but let us see. And I will utter this mantra as how it was uttered five thousand or seven thousand years back. I will start with this. You may be wondering why I am doing, we will come to it. So, let me utter this. You may be thinking here is a prohiddu has come. Because moment you utter a mantra like this, an average brilliant analytical sensible Indian thinks a prohiddu has come to utter some mantra. Go and search for this Nasadya Sukta. Just go into the Google and search for it. Millions of foreigners are studying this particular Nasadya Sukta. This has only eight mantras. I've just put the first two mantras. It has just eight mantras. There are lot of people in the world who are trying to understand this sutta talks about what is called cosmogeny, origin of the universe. Cosmology, cosmogeny, these are all child's play for Indians. Today, you know, we have God particle, we have Big Bang Theory, we have black holes, you know, so many things are being tried to... Today, the scientific community wants to understand how the universe started. And the scientific community wants to understand how the universe will dissolve. We have plenty. In fact, this is the one thirty-first sutta in the twelfth mandala. There are four sutras around this, all of them are about cosmogeny and cosmology. So, the first point I want to make is if you think Indian knowledge system is all about some religion, some rituals, some mantras and so on, you are not even scratching the tip of the iceberg. Because what Indian knowledge system is something completely different which most of us don't know. So, I wanted to start with this. Can we move on? Okay. You see something there on the right. This is a pillar. And this is a cluster of pillars. Each cluster is forty-eight pillars and there are one hundred and sixty odd of them. You can't even put your hand inside and these are made of granite. If you don't know how to... Granite is the hardest metal to work, hardest metal to work, stone material to work, it will break if you don't have the right kind of a tool. And this is not forty-eight tools, forty-eight pillars made and then you take a quick fix or you know some fevicol fix it or it was not like that. It was chiseled out of a single monolithic rock. You can't even put your hand inside. So, I wonder how these people did it. Secondly, and this is from a place where he was born, okay? Secondly, if you have a stick in your hand, you can do a three-hour musical concert. These are all musical pillars. The Saptasauras will come in this, okay? Can you move on? And this was built when? Thousand four hundred years back. Pandya kings were known to build what is called musical pillars. Made of granite stone which is the hardest material known to mankind to work. Indians know how to do it thousand five hundred years, okay? It was done by this Pandya king called Nidrasiddhi Nidman. Can you just click a few more? Forty-eight pillars, one hundred and sixty-one of them, right? Do you call it science, engineering, technology, management? I leave that exercise to you. You have sound engineering, you have logistics and supply chain management. I mean, I can go on and on. All these are known to Indians. We did not learn anything from the westerners because this was even before westerners understood what is called alloys and metals and so on. We have done all that, yeah? Move on. You have seen this. Many of you might have seen this, you would have studied, you have not seen it. What is so charming about this as we all know is for thousand eight hundred years, this pillar is simply not rusting. We have not put it in a bank, a strong room. It is lying in the middle of the sun. It is exposed to rain and etc., etc. For the last thousand eight hundred years, this is not rusting. This is kutuppinal. But I brought this because this is the only one we know. There are about thousand pillars in this country like this. In Karnataka, if you go to a place called Kollur, which is thirty kilometers from Shingiri, which is forty kilometers from Arabian Sea, at least this palace is in the middle of the country. But that is forty kilometers from Arabian Sea, that pillar is also not rusting. Yeah, can you? So, there are so many pillars are there. You know, if you go to Puri Temple, Konar Temple, there are three hundred and seventy-seven pillars. And metallurgies, materials, since I am an engineer basically, so I know all these, I have thoroughly read many of these. They are trying to figure out how does, how do you actually recreate this structure? Even as late as nineteen sixty-three, I have a conference proceedings, they don't know how to recreate structures which will not rust. When you keep it in the open sky for thousand eight hundred years, I mean, this is not, this is not a casual thing. I want you to understand there is serious metallurgy in place here. There is serious technology in place here. So, that's what this is. Can you move on? I don't know how many of you have seen this dam. This dam is the only one of the five dams of two thousand year vintage surviving. Others are all dead. Out of the five oldest dams known to mankind, this is the only surviving dam. This is in a place called Trichurappalli, Grand Anikat, Kalanai in Tamil. Karikala built it in first century BCS, first century AD or something, two thousand years old. And what did Britishers do? They actually raised the dam by twenty-seven inches in eighteen not four. After that, they were only painting it. We are now just doing whitewashing, you know, making it look new and so on. One of my good friend, a very senior professor at IAD Madras, after I give a lot of lectures, so one, listened to one of lectures of my lectures, he called me, he said, "Professor Mahadev, I want to tell you something." There is a PhD thesis which has just been submitted and awarded, which said it was absolute nonsense to raise this dam by twenty-seven inches, which Britishers did. That was the PhD thesis. Why? Because it was by design that every six years, the flood will overflow this Kalanai and destroy the crops on the downstream so that it is sustainable in the long run. The PhD thesis is saying that with absolutely no idea, Britishers increased the dam thinking you can store more water. Indians are known, so I had to use today's term, Indians are very good in water management, watershed management. There are some inscriptions in a place called Utthira Merur. In which lot of principles of how do you actually manage water bodies and all those are actually written down in great detail. I know the water management system in western India. You just go to Pakistan, Rajasthan, Gujarat, you will find beautiful stephles, amazing methodologies for even extracting water out of gypsum. They will squeeze gypsum and take water. That kind of technology we have in Rajasthan because desert people need water. If you go to the Bihar and the eastern side, you have... Gentlemen, can you please go out and speak? It is interfering with me, sorry. So, if you go to eastern parts of the country, you have again beautiful systems, iron and pine in Bihar, water management systems which Indians knew. Yeah, go ahead. This is a masterpiece of Indians which westerners did not know till nineteen thirty. What you see on the left is called a magic square. I don't know how many of you know what a magic square is. A magic square is one in which all the rows will add up to the same sum, all the columns will add up to the same sum, all the two primary diagonals. You have two diagonals? So, in this case, you try whatever, you'll get thirty-four. That is called a magic sum. Indians call it as badraganita. Two thousand years back, we have algorithms for it, okay? But you see what is there on the right? That is called sarvato badraganita, pentagonal magic square. What does that mean? What it means is don't think of it as a sheet. Think of it as a cylinder, torus. Then, what is a diagonal for thirteen, six and four? The diagonal will be one because the other side will be one. Think of it like a cylinder. The number that will be to the side of that will be one. All those diagonals will also add up to thirty-four now. There are so many diagonals now. That also will add up to thirty-four. You cannot construct a matrix like this. Don't think this is easy. Indians have designed algorithms for it. There are also Narayana Pandita. There is a very famous Kerala school of math. Absolutely philemonous work. If you are, if you are any improvement in science and technology today, it is only because of Kerala school of math. Calculus, permutation, combination, whatever you read, you mean, you are using some western norms, all of them have been done here. So, there is a Narayana Pandita in thirteen ninety-nine, fourteen ninety-nine, I think. He constructed an algorithm for that, pentagonal magic square, sarvato badraganita. And look at that, there are number only from one to sixteen. So, the sixteen numbers are repackaged, right? That's what has been done. Number one to sixteen are now placed in some combinations to get a pentagonal magic square of a certain sum. Now, this Narayana Pandita in fourteen ninety wrote an algorithm called thuragagati, like hearts, right? That's why we are good in chess. That's why grandmasters are coming from this country even today because we know all this, okay? He wrote an algorithm in fourteen ninety-five and he said there are three hundred and eighty-three possibilities there to construct that. In nineteen twenty, one of the top professor in the US said there are only eight possible solutions for that in nineteen twenty. In nineteen twenty-nine, another professor of mathematics came with the number three hundred and eighty-three, which is what Narayana Pandita said and gave an algorithm also. In fact, every chapter of my book, I am only giving you trailer. For example, mathematics, I have a one full chapter in which I have written all amazing things that have happened in this country. Binary math. Who said binary math is only fifty years old? There is something called Pingala Chandashastra written in second century BC. There is a very nice mnemonic called Yamata Rajabana Salagam. With that, you can create what is called a binary math. He has given beautiful algorithms. Just to tell you, if there is a ten-digit binary number, one zero zero zero, one 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 zero zero, ten digit. We know that there are five hundred and twelve numbers, two power ten, right? The array will have five hundred and twelve different numbers. That is called a binary number. So, this Pingala Chandashastra gives an algorithm. These are all available in my book also. What is that algorithm? You tell me the row number. Suppose you tell me three hundred and seventy-three. I will use the algorithm and I will tell you what exactly is that number, one one zero 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 zero, one 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 one, whatever. That will be exactly on the three hundred and seventy-third row. Or if you give me a ten-digit number, zero zero zero, one 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 zero zero, one one one, I will tell you in which row it is available. Not ten digit, n can be anything, two power n. If you give me a n-digit binary array, I will give you an algorithm written two thousand three hundred years back in Pingala Chandashastra. So, mathematics has plenty of those things. I am not getting in there. Yeah, move on. Okay. I don't know how many of you can recognize this? This is the only living fort in the world which is thousand years old. All the forts are museum pieces. This is a living fort. Can you tell me which city this is in? It is in Jaisalmir. Raja Jaisal constructed it in eleven hundred. Thousand years back, all other forts are not living forts. They are all only museum pieces. This is the only fort which is thousand years old, which is still livable. It's a city. It's a Jaisalmir city. You know, there is a city called Bhopal. That's not Bhopal. That's actually Bochpal. King Boja in eleventh century, actually he is a great architecture person. He has written what is called Samarangana Sutradara. It's a beautiful... I have completely consulted that book when he wrote a chapter on town planning and architecture. Indians are very good in town planning and architecture. They are living examples. Any number of structures that you see, I don't know how many of you have seen Kailasanatha temple in Ellora. You should see it before you die. Because you will not see such a structure ever in your life. And UNESCO report says, I don't know how these guys did this. I was baffled when I read the UNESCO report. They said, "How is it possible for somebody to hang from the top, upside down, car a stone, a rock?" A rock is so beautifully carved down, upside down. I don't know whether they were tying a rope and then hanging. I don't know what they did. What you have is such a beautiful structure. Kailasanatha temple in Ellora. World, UNESCO does not know how did these guys do it. That's what they say in their report. So, I am talking about that kind of architecture in this country. Yeah, okay? So, it's told it was built in eleven fifty-six by the king Raval Jaisal, which is again a UNESCO heritage site, okay? Okay. So, I have been just throwing all these ideas. So, the question is what is this Indian knowledge system? Yeah? Can you move on? So, basically, what is this Indian knowledge system? And is it all these mantras? Is it, even those mantras have a lot of scientific meaning which many of us don't know, but the question is, is it only these mantras or is it something else? What is all these and what kind of things form these? So, let me just give you a little sense of what is this Indian knowledge system. Move on. So, there are three parts to it, yeah? The first is called Indian, the second is called knowledge and third is called system. So, let us look at what it is. Indian has a demographic meaning and a geographic meaning. Geographic meaning is akantabarat. This India that we are today is a seventy-five years nonsense. This is not India. This is some political arrangement which Britishers did before they went. When you say Indian here, it starts from, you know, almost parts of Iran and it goes up to Thailand on the other side, which is on the east to west. And it is from north-south, it is very tight because there is a mountain and a ocean. So, this part, we couldn't play around too much. It's called akantabarat. Because all our knowledge systems, people are all over the place. It were not in today's political formation called India. This is just a very recent thing. Demographically, what is an Indian? An Indian is not who has a passport with India. An Indian for the purpose of this Indian knowledge system is somebody who has very deeply imbibed and lived in good part of it in this country and have understood it. They may be foreign national. There is one lady by name Stella Kremrich. She came in nineteen twenty from University of Chicago. And what did she do? She has the most authentic write-up on Hindu temples. It is seen to be believed. Such a beautiful book. She has a wonderful book on Vishnu Dharma Utra Purana. I call her Indian because she lived here for twenty years, was part of the society, learned the language, understood it and then wrote it. Max Miller is not an Indian. None of the Max Miller work is authentic. None of this modern English literature that Indology professors are doing in outside India doesn't represent Indian knowledge. Honestly, they don't know because they have just looked at here and there and so on. So, that is the first meaning of Indian. Knowledge. What is knowledge? Every society has knowledge. I am only talking about Indian knowledge today. Every person is a thinking animal. So, you experiment, you validate. I mean, that's why you improve your accounting standards. As every nonsense happens, there is some more accounting. I keep following that also sometimes. So, you know, we constantly understand, experiment, validate, that is called knowledge. But what is unique about Indian knowledge? The UNESCO site, the UNESCO heritage are generally only physical structures. You know, Roman Colossal Taj Mahal or this or that, these are all UNESCO heritage. There is one UNESCO heritage site in the world which is only sound, not any physical structure. What is that? Vedas. UNESCO has declared Vedas as a heritage site. Heritage. I mean, you can't use the word site because you know it is not a site. It's not a physical structure, okay? So, the Indian knowledge has oral. What I am trying to say is, what I uttered is how it was uttered five thousand years back, how it will be uttered some ten thousand years later also because there is a phonetic science behind it. It's all part of the system. So, it has oral, it has formal, informal. This is the only country. I am telling you, this is the only country you go on the road. Every thirty kilometers, your taste on your tongue will change. You'll eat the same dosa but the dosa will be very different. Or you, you know, Mangalore Neer dosa will be different from masala dosa you get from Mysore and etc., etc. There is a lot of oral knowledge which the grandmother has, which has carried through generation for eight thousand years. So, it is oral, formal and informal. Oral and literary. That's what knowledge is. And it is secular, religious and spiritual. All components are available. And of course, there are many ways by which these can be, has been classified in this country which many of us don't know. I will just show you one classification which I put in my book so that you have a sense of what Indian knowledge system is. Can you move on? So, this is how it is. Indian knowledge system has literary and non-literary, two major divisions that you can take. Literary is all Sanatandharma and other dharma, Buddha, Jaina, Sikh, so many things are there. Whereas the other one is called Sanatandharma in which there is a core literature. Lot of Indians know a very small portion of the core literature by name and they think that is Indian knowledge. And therefore, they are saying it is all religious, it is all useless, these are all, you know, all kinds of ideas. But there is so much which we should know. So, what are these other components? Yeah? Can you move it further? Further? So, in the other component, you name anything. You need biology, you will have. You need architecture, you have. You need audit procedures. I will show you a little bit from Arthashastra. One of the most beautiful work I have read is Arthashastra. It's a treatise on economic and financial planning. It's in such a level of detail. I have not seen such a level of detail in any text that I have read, okay, on economics, public administration, governance. You name anything. I offer a course on Bhagavad Gita. Two hundred and fifty students are fighting for it in IIM Bangalore for the last ten years I am offering. I take only seventy-five or one fifty students. So, there is a heavy bidding for my course. I am able to bring a lot of management ideas from Bhagavad Gita. That's how our literature is actually, yeah? Then you have Buddhists and Jain. You have plenty of regional literature which replicates all these in regional language, retelling it, improvising it, adding the local masala to it, etc., etc. All these things happen and then there is plenty of oral literature. There is a lot of oral literature which are very, very interesting and useful. Yeah? Move on. Okay. Since this group will not be interested in technology, there are very interesting ideas on science, engineering, technology. I have kept all of them away. I will only talk a little bit on management and economics a little bit since that I hope that maybe of little interest to you. Yeah? Okay. The entire Arthashastra. Arthashastra disappeared from this country. I won't tell you a little history to it. Arthashastra disappeared from this country. And it reappeared thanks to a gentleman in Mysore. Otherwise, he would have never got Arthashastra. There is Oriental Research Institute in Mysore. And one fine morning in nineteen twenty, one farmer was plowing his land somewhere near Mysore. He found a manuscript. I mean, something was there. He pulled it out, he found it was a manuscript. He didn't know what to do with that. He went to Oriental Research Institute, Mysore. He gave it to them. He said, "I don't know what is this. There is something lying here. Some palm leaf is lying here." They cleaned it up. There is one Kamashastri who actually read the whole thing and wrote the first official Arthashastra in full length after thousand two hundred years. References were there. It were missing. So, in nineteen twenty, Arthashastra resurfaced to the modern world. Arthashastra has six thousand five hundred, you call it as a mantra or an instruction, whatever you want to call it, written in fifteen books. The entire Arthashastra is based on this. It talks about what is called public administration and governance. So, entire Arthashastra is based on seven prakritis. That's what he says. This is six point in chapter six. For some reason, he told it in chapter six. He should have told it in chapter one. I don't know why Kautilya said it in chapter six. This what he says. He said there are seven elements which make public administration. I have read quite a lot of public administration. I don't have this clarity that I see in Arthashastra. I have read any amount, okay, as part of my training and my education and so on. What are those? It says, "This is what makes a Kautilian state." You have a king, you have what is called minister, Saramathya, you have Janapada which is territory, you have Durga which is capital, you have Kosha, Danda and Mitra. Can you move on? So, each one of them, I am not going to get into too much detail. Each one of them has some meaning. For example, Amathya means, you know, a few things and so on. Of course, Kosha means what you guys are interested in. How do you make sure that everything is fine with the treasury and so on? You have Durga and so on. But what you will not understand and what you will be stunned to see is everything that he is talking about in Arthashastra has eminent sense for a modern large multinational corporation. This is the equivalence. This is the equivalence of, in fact, I have been studying on this and writing also. For example, the equivalent of the king is the owner. You know, it may be public limited, private limited, partnership, whatever it could be. There is still a notion of ownership. In a public limited, you know, there is a majority stake with somebody. For all practical purposes, they call the shots, right? Then you have what is called Amathya. The equivalent of that is key personal. The equivalent of that is key personnel. The key personnel are the CXOs and the board and etc., etc., that we are talking. Because all these are parallel in Arthashastra. If somebody cares, they should read Arthashastra to understand why all these are to be understood in a particular way and so on, yeah? Can you? Yeah? Once again? So, board and CXOs and consultants. And what is this Janapada? It's all about markets and territories and stakeholders and so on. Beautifully, Arthashastra talks about these aspects. How do you develop it and so on? And Durga is nothing but strategic barriers. You have accounting standards to even worry about how do you, you know, recognize some of the intellectual property assets and so on. There are so many things are there. They are the real strategic barriers for a modern corporation. The concept of Durga. Of course, finance, I don't want to talk about. Controls, the Danda is nothing but audit compliance, controls, welfare, accountability and CSR. All of them are put into what is called Danda. There is a very beautiful concept in Arthashastra, which is called Matsyanyaaya. It says the big fish should never eat the small fish. That is his governing principle for law and order. Very beautifully, he brings this idea. The big fish, today, big fishes are eating small fishes in this country. In every nook and corner, that is what is happening. Whereas he talks about how do you actually configure a system? It's called Matsyanyaaya. Matsya is fish. So, he says, the big fish should not eat the small fish. He talks about, you know, liability clauses. He says, a service provider, trader should not, customer should not be at the mercy of those. He has detailed methods for it, written two thousand four hundred years back. Such a beautiful details are available. You have what is called collaborators, you know, Mitra. Joint venture, alliance, competition, all ideas are available if only people care to read Arthashastra seriously and carefully. All these are available there, yeah? And more importantly, I mean, I don't have time. There is a particular order in which he has stated. You can't say, I will have finances first. It never works like that. Very beautifully, he says, why you start with the owner, then you go for a council. I have seen all new startups, that is what is happening. There is one owner, he brings two elderly gentlemen who helps him. Because this person is so passionate about the idea or he is a very good programmer, he is a very good technology. He doesn't know what to do when you go to the market. You can't sell and make money like that. So, you need actually Amathias. Then only you need territories. Only when you have territories and markets and market shares, money will come. Then let us talk about your audit procedures after you have money. So, you know, Kosha comes later and you have to protect your know-how. So, there is an order in which he describes all these. It makes eminent sense today. If only people understand why these are important, how an enterprise has to be looked at and so on, yeah? Go ahead. These are the six methods of territorial expansion. Four books in Arthashastra entirely talks about it. How do you expand? Today, people are fighting for what is called expanding market share. People are talking about how do I grow my business? People are asking, how do I expand? Every idea here actually has an equivalent meaning to it if people can read it, yeah? For example, how can we increase the market share? How should we negotiate with potential collaborators? How do we deal with competitors? Every idea is available in Arthashastra. It is told in a different context, but if you know how to, you know, make sense of it, read it and understand it, you can answer many of those. When and when not to plan for a new market entry? All these strategies actually talk about all those. What is the value of multiple joint ventures? He has what is called a circle of tall kings. There are tall people who can make a very robust system. He talks about enemies, enemy, friends, friends, so many methodologies he gives. All these are very useful for finding out how to create craft, joint venture and alliances and so on. Very beautiful ideas are available here, yeah? Okay. Now, delegation. What is all these delegation? And look at what he has written two thousand four hundred years back. So beautifully, he says, why do you delegate? What does he say? He says, Yogapatthat. Yogapatth means simultaneous. Yogapatthatukarmanam. Work will happen simultaneously in a large enterprise, correct? It doesn't happen in one place. It happens simultaneously. Anekattvat, anekasta. In different places, of different types of activities can happen, right? Desha, Kala, Teo, Ho, Mahbudd. There should be no delay in timely addressing of customer requirements. That's what he is thinking about. Desha and Kala, you know, time and place should not get disturbed. I mean, you should not be very poor in delivering it at the right place at the right time. Therefore, Paroksham. Paroksham means they are not in my front, they are elsewhere. Paroksham means elsewhere, or paroksham means in front. So, I will have people who will administer this large enterprise because work has to be delivered at the right time, at the right place. Customers must be happy and work is of multiple nature, at multiple places, all happening simultaneously. All these definitions are available for. Why do you, and he has a very elaborate structure for delegation. It is seen to be believed how he thought about it two thousand three hundred years back. We can learn a lot of it from them, yeah? He talks about sources of income and application of income so beautifully because he sees a treatise on financial planning. Arthashastra is a masterpiece on economic and financial planning, public finance, planning and economics. So, he says, what are all the ways by which increase the revenue for the state? So, he has given some, you know, seven broad categories of how do you? I mean, it is amazing. Look at his ingenuity. Today, you know what is happening? A poor trader. A poor trader makes some money and the government slaps on him and then collects tax in money. You know what Arthashastra says? You don't have to give in money, you give it in kind. That's okay with me. You don't have to give always in money. Today, we have narrowed everything to currency and that puts a lot of trouble for small players and small traders and so on. He has been very, very, you know, his vision was much bigger. He says, it is possible that you can draw money in more than one way or you can give by of labor, supply labor. He says, you don't have to pay tax by paying money, supply labor. I will square it against what you need. What kind of ingenuity he has had in terms of seeing how to increase the income, okay? Yeah? And his principle, how do you tax? He says, a fruit, a fruit should not be plucked. First of all, a fruit should not be plucked when it is not ripe. It's useless. You can't do anything, it will spoil and then you have to throw it. Second thing, he says, you should not in your over anxiety, pluck all the fruits in no time, that plant will die. You can't also over-pluck. He says, the people will kill you. They will kill the king if you overdo your thing on how do you do. So, tax planning, lot of guiding principles, specific details of how do you? For example, there is a direct rate of weights and measures because traders will cheat. So, he says, how, what are all the different scales? This much detail is available. What are all the different types of scales? How often it should be calibrated? Who will calibrate? Who will be the inspector who will actually see it? If we are caught, what kind of fine will be for the inspector and what will be the fine for the trader? That level of detail is available. I mean, just giving one example. There is a detail on when to submit audit reports also. I will show you. That level of details are available in this text, yeah? Move on. Look at the kind of tax he has suggested two thousand three hundred years back. We will just, you know, hang our head because all these we found in the last fifty years. Look at, you name anything, you know, turnover tax, optra, everything he has suggested. He has said there are ways by which you can get, you know, revenue for a state. All kinds of taxes. You know, Baga is one-sixth of the production can be given. You don't have to pay in money, you can give one-sixth of the production also. Agricultural produce, give it one-sixth to the government over. Instead of trying to sell it, I may sell, not sell. I may realize a certain profit by end up paying in money today. These are problems today. He has thought about it completely differently. You can supply, you know, transaction taxes there, monopoly tax, even tax for Chapa, for your Mudrana, for passport. He invited people from abroad. So, you have entry, you know, you have passport fees, taxes and fees. Lot of ideas are available. It enlarges our understanding of how do you actually do financial planning. I don't have time to get into all that, that's why I am just showing you a table here just to tell you, a gentleman two thousand three hundred years back is able to think in this much detail in this country, yeah? Move on. Audit procedures. For example, since you know your group of, I thought I will get a little bit of that also here. Now, he says, accounts should come for auditing on the full moon day of every Ashada. The date is fixed. On the full moon day of every Ashada, the books of accounts must be presented for auditing. And then he goes, I am not getting into detail. Again, the charm of Arthashastra, he just say one sentence and go. He gives a lot of details. How do you bring it? Who are all the people with whom you can come? When can you get into the room? Who are all the people can get into the room? And what kind of discussion do you can have? That detail is there. That's the kind of detail you will find in Arthashastra, okay? Not coming of the proper, sorry, can you go back? For those who are not coming at the proper time or without account books, there will be some kind of fine. Now, you should be brought in a sealed form. So many details, how you should be brought, the books of accounts and the supporting documents, how you should be brought and so on, considering it was talked about two thousand three hundred years back. Be ready for the audit when the audit officer calls. Not lie about the accounts, failure to confirm to, many more, I have not included them. So, complete procedure of how auditing will be done, when you should present, what you should present and what will happen and what are the consequences of, the pluses and minuses of that? These are all available in Book Two, Chapter Seven of. Book Two is one-fifth of Arthashastra. Enormous amount of detail is available in just one Book Two out of fifteen books. Book Two alone has one-sixth of Arthashastra actually, yeah? Okay. Okay. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a quick glimpse. But I want to tell you something very seriously. The question is, what do we do today? Because a lot of people tell me, sir, all these don't revel in the past. All those are fine. Past is past, you just leave it. What is the point in talking about it today? Lot of people ask me, why should I do it? Is there any value at all? Should we do anything about it or you just leave it? Because for last two hundred years, we have left it. This is the only society which is shameful of its past or ignorant of its past. There are only two categories here. Either we are shameful of our past in a very unqualified fashion or we are completely ignorant of our past. So, the question in front of us is, is this okay? Is that okay? Whatever has happened, has happened, we'll put it back, just move on or should we do something else? That's the question. I want to share some thoughts because you are all youngsters. I may not be here in the next thirty years or forty years, but you guys are going to be here. So, I want you guys to think about it, yeah? Now, question is, what do you want? Why do you want Indian knowledge system? So, I don't want to say, oh, this is our national pride and, you know, this is our responsibility and every Indian. I won't say any of those. That's all add-ons. If you want, you have it. I am not going to ask why do you have it? But I will tell you a very important thing. The next hundred years, you are all youngsters, I am telling you. The next hundred years, only that society which is able to win the IPO war will become rich and control the rest of the world. What is intellectual property right? Intellectual property right is very simple. I will put it in simple English. X came and told me, I know this is how it should be done. Y came and told me, no, no, I know how this is to be done day before yesterday. Then Y must be given the intellectual property rights and not the X in simple terms. I mean, it has complications, I am making it simple. Now, you know what Westerners are doing today? They are trying to take as many IPOs possible on every conceivable thing on which, because for which you will have patent protection, you have so many things on which you can conquer the world and so on. So, I will give you two examples. The first example is how we lost a patent on something which is ours. US company was awarded a patent for neem as pesticide. Neem is a plant which belongs to India. It belongs to the tropical country. It doesn't belong to, you will not find a single neem tree after thirty-three degrees latitude, north or south. Neem will not grow there. Neem will grow only in plus or minus thirty-three degrees. It's a tropical plant. It's a rain tree. This country knows everything about neem, but none of us know. You can go and tell the world Intellectual Property Organization, no, 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 believe me. We used neem five thousand years back. They'll pat your back and say, good luck. Can you show me some document? IPR is, you have to fight an IPR battle, you have to show references. You have to show literary evidences. Nobody is going to take things on face value. So, we lost on the neem. Although we know that we have been using it on a day-to-day basis here in this country, we lost it. Two Indians who became American citizens, University of Mississippi, they went and got a patent for turmeric, powdered turmeric for curing wounds. My grandmother used to do it. Moment I got hurt when I was three years old, four years old, she will take a turmeric, rub it on the stone, add some common salt to it and then apply it in my wound, three days, everything is over. Every grandmother of, every one of you would have been doing it. We lost that patent. But Dr. Mashailkar, who was the chairman of CSCR with hundred-and-fifty scientists for ten years, what nonsense here? Hundred-and-fifty scientists for ten years? You have to spend a million man hour to get back that patent? We did it. We got the patent revoked. But is this the way we have to go in this country for the next hundred years? We know everything. They are all available in palm scripts and Arthashastras and Yukti Kalpataru and Samaranga Sutradhana, everywhere it is there. None of us are taught, none of us know. So, we will become coolies again. At least for this reason, I want all of you in your profession, read Indian knowledge. I don't want you to read. I have read widely. God has been kind to me, that's a different story. I am not asking you to read widely. Read which is of your interest. We have a lot of things on chemistry. In fact, India produced industrial-grade zinc in eleventh century when the rest of the world did not even know how to get zinc. Indians were exporting what is called wood steel. Just go and Google these terms and understand the legacy of this country. And where was wood steel exported from? Hundred kilometers from this place, in the tri-junction of Kerala, Tamil Nadu and Karnataka, in Salem and, you know, that area. And in Kannadanli, Ukku and the Heltare for steel. That's why it is called woods. In the, I mean, in Tamil, it is called Urukku. In Tamil, in Kannada, it is called Ukku. That's why Westerners call it as woods. To make Damascus blades, warfare was on blades, huge swords. Damascus blades, if you have to manufacture, there is only one steel possible in this world, which is called wood steel, manufactured very close to our place and exported through Kodungala Port in, near Kuchin. Till nineteen sixty-three, nobody know, have understood, even now I don't, they don't know how to replicate wood steel. We are very good in iron and steel. We are very good in zinc. We could extract zinc. Indians know that between five hundred degrees centigrade and five hundred and fifty degrees centigrade, zinc will vaporize at five fifty degrees centigrade, it will become zinc oxide. So, you have to catch this between five hundred and five fifty, which Westerners came to know about thousand years later. We had a process called download drift distillation process. We got zinc. In eleventh century, our production of zinc was running to millions of tons. Go to K-Three Mines in Rajasthan and see, you will know it for yourself. Indians are manufacturing such beautiful dolls, chola-time dolls, idols in Panchaloha, which means we know how to mix five metals at the same time in a certain proportion, silver, gold, iron, lead and tin, copper and make idols. And what is happening to those idols? People are smuggling it out. Or we are recovering it from Australia and USA. This is all we are doing today. Only in seventeenth century, Westerners know how to make it. Whereas how did we know it? In Vishnu Dharma Purana, there is something called Maduchistavidanam. And that Maduchistavidanam is what French people are using today. We learnt how to make cast beautiful-looking, sharp-looking idols. Iconography, we are very good. So, I can go on and on, I am not going to do all that. All that I am saying is, if you want all that knowledge for which we want patent, don't throw ICs into the gutter, it is in the gutter, take it out. Clean it up and then try to use it, yeah? Go, go down. So, so many things is possible. I will quickly go over it, yeah? One can fight and win emerging IPO battles. Only Indians must do, foreigners will not do it. They are least interested in doing it, why would they do it? If you want, you protect your tough. They are going to come for your, I mean, that we have learnt eight-hundred, nine-hundred years, we have history. Now we have to turn back. Fight and win, identify application areas for implementation, then we'll talk about deep studies, visualize the new world order, other than after twenty years. I am saying, we can do these low-hanging fruits first, yeah? Okay. Go on. So I have written a book published by Prentishal on Indian knowledge system, concepts and applications, four hundred and fifty pages. Whatever I have spoken is not even the tip of that little bit I sprinkled from here and there. Hugely researched book. If you are interested, you can always look at it and so on. I'll end this whole talk, go on. I'll end the whole talk with this. There was a temple, there are so many temples. There was a temple, as we know, in front of the temple, sometime beggars sit and ask for alms. So there was a beggar sitting on a wooden table, on the wooden box, he was sitting and asking for alms. When Sanyasi was going into the temple, so he asked for alms. Sanyasi said, I am also supposed to beg. I don't have anything to give you because my dharma is I should also beg and eat and so on. So what can I give you? Then he said, you are sitting on a box, no? Why don't you open and see what is inside? So these beggars said, sir, I am a fifth generation beggar. My great-grandfather sat on this box, my grandfather sat on this box, my father sat and now I am sitting, my son is getting ready, okay? So five generations I have sitting on it, what is there to see? The Sanyasi, when he went in, he said, gentlemen, I will tell you one thing. Whether you sit on the box for one hour or one million hour, you may not know what is inside until you open it. Then he went away. After three, four days, this thought was really reverberating in, in the beggar's mind. One old lock, he took a huge stone and broke the lock. He actually opened the trunk, it was full of gold and diamond and so on. So he was sitting on it and begging. I don't know whose story it is, thank you for this opportunity. Okay.
Thank you, sir, for delivering such an incredibly enlightening, enlightening and engaging session. We are sincerely grateful for the wealth of knowledge you have shared with us. It's been nothing short of fantastic. We now request Sri A. Shripad sir to give a token of gratitude to Professor Mahadev sir. A huge round of applause please. Thank you, Shripad sir.
I would now like to request Shiva Barinella, member of Sikhasa Bengaluru of SIRC ICAI to deliver the vote of thanks thereby winding up this session.
That was a wonderful session, sir. Thank you very much for your insights and valuable lessons for our students today. I, Shiva Barinella, on behalf of all, extremely delighted to extend a heartfelt thanks for the session chairman, Professor Mahadevan sir and C.S. Vipad sir. I also extend a heartfelt thanks for the crowd for extremely being patient for your active participation. Give it up for yourself, guys. Big round of applause. Thank you.